...the budget for the upcoming year. And we have some suggestions in that regard as well. Most of this morning's work is really going to be done. The heavy lifting will be done by Bob Elliott, Director of Finance, and as usual, I'll chime in and kibbitz periodically with comments to support. With that, let me turn to Mr. Elliott.
Good morning, Council from the blue shirt, yellow tie squad. We're prepared to start our budget session. I wanted to say thank you to our budget team and all the executives and budget liaisons, specifically Michelle Nguyen, Adrineus Ion, Michelle Flynn, and Lily Fang in Finance. What we want to do today is go through overview of, as Jim said, the 08-09 budget, where we're at at this point in time, the 9-10 budget estimates, and some of our strategies. Can we get a light turned down? This is a recap. You've seen these numbers in the past, kind of where we were as a recap for the 08-09 budget and coming in and the imbalance and the shortfall. We had initially about a $9.9 million shortfall, and some of the strategies to balance that at that point in time were undertaken by council. We ended adopted budget of $168 million. Some of those reductions that we undertook were elimination of 43 positions, and I think those positions have been distributed or reviewed by council in the past. Part of that included some program reductions, including the SROs, some of the COPS programs, forceful positions. There was downsizing of one engine company to three staff, and other reductions in recreation and library, as well as some other M&amp;O reductions.
Bob, before you go on, if you go back to the last page for just a second, Bob has to feel like he's having a bit of an out-of-body experience because going into the 08-09 fiscal year, which would have been a year ago, March of '08, April of '08, in that timeframe, Bob Elliott wasn't here. But just to remember that because we're going to touch on the numbers that we were facing this time a year ago, and then the updates that we did at the end of the first quarter and the second quarter, and the steps we were taking to maintain the balanced budget. We can tend to think that these numbers are all the numbers that we were facing at the midpoint of the year after it was clear the nation was in the significant downturn that we've been experiencing, but these were actually the numbers that we were facing going into the budget year this time a year ago, and the considerable steps that we took then to maintain the balanced budget and ensure that we'd stay within our means. And those were outlined then on the next slide. And I think we should take a couple of moments here and comment on these. I don't think we've seen in many years this level of reduction. It probably goes back to the mid-1990s, '93, '94, when we saw this level of reductions. I wasn't here, but some of the folks here were here then. That's probably the last time we saw these kinds of challenges being faced in our operations. But 43 positions, 45 total eliminated, and some very important programs that you spent a lot of time talking about. I still have that very long list of reductions in all the various departments that you went through, program by program, evaluating and deciding which ones to possibly give some additional funding to and which ones to proceed to the department's recommendations. This is just a flavor of the reductions that you implemented at that time to keep the budget balanced. Go ahead, Bob.
So moving into 08-09, we obviously had the economic downturn. The credit and banking crisis came along. Our auto sales have reduced anywhere up to 50%, depending on the different dealers. Our construction-related permits and items like that have reduced significantly. We've had a closure of a couple of different stores, notably Mervyn's and Circuit City. Our unemployment currently is around 9.9%. LA County, I think, is at 11.2%. So the economy is in a definite downturn at this point in time. Just for comparison, we wanted to show some numbers. This is the latest sales tax information we have. Glendale's down 11.7%, which is not bad, honestly, because of the downturn in the auto dealers, which provide about a third of our sales tax. Kind of shows the input or the addition of a lot of the activity at Americana. Other surrounding cities, you'll see Burbank's down 11.2%, Pasadena 13.6%. Cerritos, which is a heavy into automobiles, and El Monte, the same, are down 16 and 32%. And some relative areas in terms of LA County, Ventura, and all of Southern California. So relatively speaking, sales tax in Glendale, even though down 11.7, is not too bad compared to our surrounding areas.
I was noting at the beginning of the meeting, before we got started, that El Monte's large number is predominantly because they're home to Longo Toyota, which is the largest Toyota dealership in the United States. Longo Toyota, Longo Lexus, huge sales, probably more than we generate out of all of our auto dealerships combined are generated out of that one dealership in El Monte. And of course, during these times, when you put that many eggs in one relatively small basket, you can be impacted. If you look at the figures for the first, the last nine months of the calendar year, which would include this quarter, the cities that are very automotive use-dependent had the largest reductions. Cerritos, their 16.8 was close to 30% overall for the nine months. El Monte was as bad as it is here. Many of the communities that are very automotive-dependent, Pomona was one I noticed, down as much as 30% in their total sales tax revenues because of the loss in auto sales. Glendale's been fortunate. We have a relatively mixed retail base. Our automotive dealerships make up a very large portion, but we also have very strong retail. The Galleria is a concentration, but the Americana has helped frankly stabilize that and give that a much better year than it would have had. We have a relatively good mix of retail to offset the losses in automotive, and they've done relatively well. On the other hand, as I've noted, Broadway and Brand is kind of the example of what's happening in the economy. In addition to Circuit City, which is no longer in existence, Mervyn's is no longer in existence. They're all right there at that intersection. Linen and Things is no longer in existence. They were there at the marketplace. And Borders is on a list of companies that are struggling nationwide. In fact, the list was companies we might not see survive calendar year '09, and that's right there at the intersection as well. So Broadway and Brand is kind of the example of what's happening nationwide in the retail economy.
So that translated into our mid-year scenario where we came to council and has shown this information before, but just to recap, these were our mid-year revenue reductions, which gave us a gap of about $8 million. So mid-year, in looking at the impact of the revenue reductions with some of the other adjustments that council had approved during the 08-09 budget year, we are now at an $8.4 million shortfall. Efforts to stabilize or make up that gap were adopted at mid-year. Part of the strategy in that was transferring the $1.5 million. The gas tax fund is going to do the general fund portion of the street repairs. We anticipate that being a three-to-five-year strategy, depending on the funds available in the gas tax fund. Some of the other items that were adopted at mid-year, we continued a hard hiring freeze. We eliminated an additional 23 positions. We suspended the general fund transfer to the CIP. In addition, we transferred the project management cost for CIP to the CIP fund, and then we had a variety of additional M&amp;O reduction efforts. Part of those efforts included we're doing comprehensive energy audits at all the various facilities. There was a survey or a sweep for personal appliances and eliminated all refrigerators and ice makers and anything that was in the different facilities to reduce energy consumptions. The building lights are turned off at night. Public Works have switched the janitorial staffing to the days to save quite a bit of money in utilities. We're working on moving towards a centralized fleet management for the four garages to be able to reduce the size of the fleet, as well as looking at the reduction in take-home vehicles so we can better utilize the vehicles that we have and reduce our fuel consumption. In addition, we've tried to implement, to the best we can, 25% or more reduction in travel and training, and that's obviously been subjective within the departments, but been fairly successful. So where does that leave us? Taking all that into account and the strategies we've put into place, we've highlighted that one line, projected year-end subtotals. The reason being that's, those are the balances that we'll show in a minute moving forward into '9-10, but we've basically called the items that have, that council did not take formal action on, like the hiring freeze and some of the M&amp;O reductions as administrative actions. They've been put into place, but there were no formal council actions. However, adopting all those strategies, the actual official actions that you took were projecting a balanced year-end for 08-09 with a slight surplus. Moving forward to '9-10, we're carrying forward that one line item that shows the original $2.9 million gap. Some of those items that we're looking at at '9-10 are additional increases in our expenditures. We'll show that in a minute. The increase in transfer from the CIP, again, coming back to the general fund, and some other revenue reductions. So what are the impacts on the resources? Again, we are looking at slightly reducing our sales tax. We're not real sure what the impact of the increased sales tax will be for the last quarter of this year and what impact that will have in decreased sales. We suspect that there'll be a little bit of a slowdown for the last quarter of this year. We're anticipating a fairly normal volume for '9-10. Still with the economy the way it is, the building and planning fees are down a little bit. As you know, we closed our passport services in the old police department, so there's a reduction that we've highlighted here in terms of revenue, but we've also reduced all the costs, and it was actually not even breaking even, so that was the decision to close that. Mutual aid. What we're doing, and there's a revenue reduction difference from 08-09 to '9-10, what we're doing is isolating and removing the revenue estimates that we would have anticipated for any strike team activity, and we're setting up a special revenue fund to highlight those amounts for two reasons. One, it tends to skew the activity in the general fund because those are unplanned items. So we will charge the time that the firefighters are away, but when the revenue comes in, we'll deposit it in that fund to offset those costs, so it won't show the general fund going up and down year in and year out with that activity. And then some reduction in other miscellaneous revenues gives us a complete or total of $1,570 in reductions, but taking into the, into account the transfer from the CIP back to the general fund is $1,001,000, so we're looking at a net reduction of $450,000.
Bob, don't leave this page yet. Touching on a couple of these, the sales tax revenues, the 733 is an anticipated continue slide in total revenues. So the 733 added to the $3 million loss that we anticipated at the beginning of the year, actually mid-year, and then the loss that we anticipated at the beginning of the year. Michelle, do we have a sense of through '09-10, though, how much total we would anticipate in sales tax revenues going down from what it was in the '08-9 or not, '07-8 timeframe?
Oh, from '07-8?
Well, from, throughout the entire '08, '09, and then '9-10. $3.2 million. And then on the mutual aid special revenue fund, this shows up as a reduction in resources of the general fund because this activity has historically made a profit, if you will. We get reimbursed for more than we expend. Setting it up in a special revenue account where we can track and account for both the expenditures and revenues to show that means that you remove that cost center, that profit center, out of the general fund and put it in a special fund. But the profits will still be there and remain in the fund. It'll give us easier ability to account for it and show that, as well as, as Bob says, not have the spike in expenditures in the general fund. So it's a way of setting up a separate cost center. Those funds then could either be transferred back into the general fund, or they could be used for things like the new recruit training that comes up about every year or two and becomes a special expenditure in the general fund. These resources could be used to fund those kinds of programs, and again, not have these spikes in the general fund.
Some of the changes to the upcoming '9-10 budget that we had anticipated originally were the various COLAs from the different bargaining groups, $2 million for the GPOA, $1,000,000 for the Glendale Firefighters Association, we'll talk about that in a minute, and then $162,000 for the police managers. And then some of the other changes that we're anticipating that gives you about a $4.1 million increase in our expenditures. So putting that all together, our original '9-10 initial budget, putting that all together gives us $6.9 million, and a couple of the other items on there. GFFA, as you know, already took zero COLA for the next two years, so we've taken that $1,000,000 off the expenditures. We are anticipating a slight increase in our medical insurance. HR has done a lot of work in that area. They've procured a new benefits broker for insurance, and they're actively negotiating our medical insurance rates, and where a lot of businesses are looking at double-digit increases, we're anticipating ours about 5% or less. So hats off to HR for that effort. And then because the paramedic fund is a self-encapsulated profit center, as Jim said, like the strike team, the paramedic fund is started up 10 years ago. It is, I guess the word would be struggling, so we are anticipating transferring another $1.3 million out of the general fund to the paramedic fund. And then an effort we've been working on for a bunch of months is to better identify the costs. We call it cost allocation. It's a way of transferring the general back office functions or the internal support departments like HR, finance, city attorney's office, in a ratable methodology out to all the user funds. The methodology in place before was frankly quite a simplistic way to do it. This is, breaks it down in some very ratable bases in which we can allocate those costs out, so we're anticipating at least $1.3 million additional funds coming back into the general fund. So taking all that into account gives us a $6.9 million gap going into '9-10. So the efforts going forward in some of the areas we've identified, obviously for savings, is either eliminating or reducing some of the contracted COLAs, and that, those efforts are underway. We're looking at some specific program reductions. All the departments have been asked to do 5%, 7.5% scenarios, which we'll be reviewing with you in the weeks to come. Going up to, that's up to 5%? Michelle? Going up to the complete 5% reduction will give a $3.6 million reduction in costs. Obviously, there's program impacts with those reductions. We can continue the hard hiring freeze estimates at this point, based off the current vacancies would save about $4.5 million per year. The fire department is looking at a new EMS modeling in terms of delivering services for the public that could save up to $700,000 a year. Some of the other efforts underway, we've downsized, we're anticipating the downsizing of our graphics department and relocating it into, under the public information office. It will be pared down because of some retirements, so we're looking to have some savings there. HR is looking at our employee health services and how to restructure those services that we deliver to the employees. So we're anticipating some savings there. Other things that we're working on that we don't really have numbers as yet in terms of how we're looking at delivering services, again, the fleet consolidation, that's an effort that I'm sure will save money. We just don't know at what point or how much it will generate at this point in time. Again, the graphics, it will be downsized, but will also mean some of those work that graphics has done will have to be taken outside. We're looking at changing the filming coordination and permitting process within the city to better serve the public in that area, and just, I don't know if there's other things you want to mention, there's a whole laundry list of items that we're looking at savings. Other things that we'll be discussing with you, some one-time capital outlay requests, such as turnouts for the fire department, and some other unfunded recurring expenditure and program requests. So we will review those as we go through the individual departments. Last thing we wanted to talk about is the budget study session, how you want to undertake all these. We met yesterday. One of the strategies was doing two hours on Tuesdays and four hours on Thursdays starting in May. Our recommendation would be to calendar these and undertake these departments at that point in time.
This is reflective of our feeling that we need to have some blocks of time, four-hour increments, whether it's on a Thursday or a Wednesday or frankly a Saturday, whenever you can do it, because it takes that much time to really have a good conversation, for example, about police services or fire services, and to get through some of these discussions without seeming to be hurried and glossing over some very important programmatic implications that we need to get into. Now, I don't think we'd need all of these, but we've tried to outline kind of four and four, thinking that is as much as we'd need and would get us done by the first part of June. We're obligated by charter to bring you a preliminary budget for your consideration, presented to you by the first part of June. We can do that, and that can incorporate all of the strategies that we've outlined here in more detail, but you need to have time to discuss the service implications, and there'll be some very serious ones in those 5% programs the departments will be bringing forward. So whether it's on Thursdays or Tuesdays, we think we need to be able to carve out this kind of time and some fairly good-sized chunks so we can take you through that and you can have good-quality conversations about the implications of it.
And with that, we can open it up for discussion and questions.
Okay. Who wants to start?
You want to take public comments first, maybe?
Well, I was going to go around first, and then we'll, at one speaker apart. If anyone wants to speak today, please fill out a card. Any comments or questions? Mr. Draymond?
Well, I have some questions, and they may be presented later, so they're going to sound premature, I'm sure, because I'm sure that we'll get to all of these areas. But obviously, one of the things that we're starting to hear about, and we're starting to be lobbied about, has to do with the park rangers program. This came up before, so I'm interested to know what the plan and the suggestion is there, obviously. And I see some smiles around the dais because I'm sure people recognize that this has came up last time, we were lobbied last time, and that will undoubtedly happen and is happening now, so I'd like to know about that at some point. With regard to the consolidating, I don't know how you, I don't remember how you worded it, Bob, consolidating fleet vehicles or?
Yes.
Take-home vehicles, basically. This is something that's been, we've been talking about, we're looking at for, what, 20 years, more or less, on and off, correct? Well, you might not know that, Bob, but the other, Bob, next to you, I'm sure does, so this has been going on, we've, talking about it for certainly more than a decade, anyway, on and off. So when it's presented up here, I'm going to be interested in hearing more than just we're looking at it, we're talking about it, we hope to reach a conclusion. And I'm hoping that this council will help, help light a fire one way or the other that helps it reach a conclusion one way or the other. So take-home vehicles is a second area. Let's see, you mentioned printing and graphics. I'm interested to know about that, more about that, and also two other areas. One is, we've talked, I know Mayor Quintero has spoken for some years and probably others as well about the possibility of some savings based on streamlining, perhaps GRA with housing or those kinds of things. And I didn't see that up there, or if it was, I missed it, so I'd like to hear about that. And then lastly, I'd like to know what kind of funds we're using on the Central Avenue, excuse me, Colorado, Colorado project. Are those general funds? Are those funds dedicated only to roadwork? What are those? And so I'd like to look at that as well, because I have some feelings about that that I'd like to express at some point. And those, Mr. Mayor, are just the areas that I'm interested in talking about. I'm not trying to telegraph to staff or you or the public or anyone that I have where my feelings are on either side of any of those issues, but I know there are issues I want to look at, want to talk about, and I've been hearing about for some time, so thank you.
Good.
Any other? Mr. Weaver?
Well, this is my 13th budget I've worked on. I know staff has been meeting continuously on what Bob Elliott has spoken about, and I know this is just the beginning, and that we're going to get into a lot of the details. So I'm not concerned yet on any one subject. I want to be cautious of the fact that when the economy turns, we don't want to have done too many incisions in the city workforce, that when we, the economy turns around, we're having to backtrack out of things we've done, possibly certain consolidations, and then later we're trying to separate out again. So I think that'll all be ferreted out as we go through this. Times like this, I guess, are healthy, like General Motors has discovered. You get lean and mean, so there have been some silver linings out of this downturn in the economy in that we've focused more on looking at ways to save, because in good times, you tend to relax and not be digging as tough to find ways to save. You have the money, you parcel it out, and you go on. That's what I've seen most of my 12 years on this. Now, we're really, really tightening it down, and I think that's, like I said, a silver lining in all this, but I know we're going to get into more detail, and as we do, at the will of council, you'll provide all the details we need to make some awfully constructive and good decisions.
Any other comments, questions?
I'll wait for, I'll let you have a question.
Okay. For myself, I am also in agreement. I'd like to have some discussion on organizational changes and consolidations. There's TBD to be determined, but I'd like to at least have a broad overview of what the city manager and staff have in mind. We may not be able to get down to the details, but at least a good broad overview of how we can achieve some efficiencies by doing so. Then in terms of the budget study session schedule, does any, do people have their calendars? I guess not. Yeah, it would seem to be, it would seem to me, if we truly want to get some of this work done, that perhaps we could take another day out of the week to have some in-depth And that's all I have at this point. Okay, we have one speaker, Herbert Milano.
My name is Herbert Milano, Mayor. Quintero, members of the city council and city staff. Quintero, members of the city council and city staff, I'm looking for a council member who will support the taxpayer and the rate payer. I believe that no other study is more important today than to take a look at the biggest part of our budget, which is the payroll. I believe that all of the time that you dedicate towards the analysis of the city's budget should be proportional to the department's share of that payroll. I don't see any logic in addressing the issues of a department that takes only 5% of the payroll and spending most of your time in it, or a considerable amount of time, I think it should be proportional. So if a department takes 30% of your budget, it should merit 30% of your attention. For many years, the year-to-year increases in payroll has been about $9 million, at the very least, that's without including pensions and benefits, and that's for the past several years. So 9 million, 10 million, and even more than that. For a period of about 10 years, we also had staffing increases in middle management at 45%, whereas other units in the city increased by barely, you know, 2, 3, 5%. I think that salaries and pension benefits for many individuals, since we recognize the downturn in the economy, for many individuals have gone up by 10, 20,000, 30,000, $40,000 in year-over-year increases. So I don't think that there are enough individuals bearing the pain and bearing the sacrifice that the rest of us who are not in government have to bear. I have a problem with the issues of health benefits. I don't understand how individuals in management can ask for and receive health benefits for families at $1,300, where other members of the city employees get down to $750 per family. I think that the health of a child, of a manager, and the health of a child, of a linesman in GWP should be the same, and we should all be, basically, have that particular area uniform. This whole idea of having two Fridays off per week for management is inconceivable. I don't know of management, senior management, who are basically saying, "This is my Friday off," you know, or "This is my other Friday off." From my understanding, it is that management continues to receive Fridays off, and this is something totally inequitable. I believe that if they can take those days off, they can, maybe, should take those days off without pay. I'm a proponent that we should have no rate increases and no tax increases, because it is the general public that is bearing the brunt of this hard economic times. I'm not essentially a proponent of staff reductions, I think that those individuals with the most should be able to lower the salary so we can maintain the staffing that the city needs in order to maintain its basic services. Thank you very much.
Hey, I don't have any other cards. Okay. Mr. Najarian?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Let me start with one of the slides that we had. Slide number nine, and it indicates that we're patching the hole in this year's budget by using our accumulated gas tax to relieve general fund contribution for street projects. So what are the implications of that? It looks like we're transferring a million and a half. Does that mean that there's going to be less? What would that gas tax accumulated funds otherwise have been used for? And does that have any long-term implications for infrastructure and street? I'm not sure which, how that gas tax money was perhaps earmarked or restricted for use, but what are the implications of that?
But let me start, and then Steve Zernken can supplement. The gas tax money came from a number of years of building up a surplus in the gas tax fund. The number I had was about $17 million in the gas tax fund. Street maintenance and street reconstruction projects are supported by gas tax revenues and supplemented with general fund revenues in the capital improvement program. And frankly, I think a luxury that few cities today can afford to do, but that's principally why our streets are in generally better condition than most communities. This would, for some period of time, in our view as three to five years, pull back on the general fund subsidy of street maintenance work, and utilize that surplus that we've generated and built up in the gas tax fund to maintain the same level of street work that we would otherwise be doing. I think to get to the heart of your question, if we didn't pull back the general fund money, we could utilize that surplus to increase even more significantly the work that could be done on our streets. But of course, the general fund then will be faced, in this case, with this current year, about a $1.3 million additional deficit we'd need to face because of the loss in revenues, and next year, potentially, a greater amount. We talked about this when we did the mid-year budget adjustments, of pulling back the 1.5 this year?
1.5.
1.5 this year, and then an additional 1.1 in the upcoming year, and utilize the surplus that we've generated in streets to maintain the same level of street maintenance and reconstruction.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The short answer is, it will not have any impact on our program as you have known it for a short-term basis, as we use up the surplus. The surplus was accumulated over the last three to five years, three to four years, really, as we concentrated a lot of our efforts on the wastewater infrastructure and repairing storm damage that occurred in the '04, '05 rains, of which, most of that, if not all of that, was FEMA-funded, so that allowed us to put our funding back. Certainly, we could do more, but we also have a capacity issue. There's only a certain amount, you can be tearing the city up at one particular time. There's a window that we generally use, and tonight, you'll see that, I have quite a few items on the agenda, as we get ready for the summer, warmer weather season, when we do most of our roadwork. So I think in the short term, Mr. Najarian, this will not have an impact, we just happen to be able to do this because of the surplus that we accumulated in our gas tax money.
And we're getting an annual inflow of gas tax money?
That's correct. It ebbs and flows, the governor has held it for a couple of years, for several months due to the state's budget, but yes, we get a regular allocation each year of straight gas tax, and then we also have some other programs where we are supposed to be getting allocations, some of those have been halted, but in the end, we will get those in the next two to three years.
We might also touch on, the long-term fiscal planning implications of this are that over the next five years, as we draw down on the surplus that's been generated in streets to maintain our maintenance level, we have to begin to plan to bring the general fund's contribution back up to where it was before, or when the surplus is gone, all we'll have is the annual street maintenance money, which is not equivalent to what we have previously spent on streets. So as we plan for the next five, six years, the, what we anticipate is, with the recovery in the economy, the general fund will begin to recover, and we can then begin, over time, to ramp back up the general fund's contribution to streets to get us back to where we were in '08, '09, with utilizing the surplus in the meantime to maintain our street maintenance levels. Now, if we don't do that, if we don't have the willpower to recommit the contribution from general fund to streets, then as the surplus comes down, we're going to find ourselves, over time, having spent the surplus, having only the gas tax annual revenues, and that won't be equivalent to what we've historically spent on streets.
Is the 1.5 million the sum total of our general fund contribution to this street repair?
No, it's actually the 1.5 plus an additional 1.3.
So there's a little more?
Yes. Yeah, the general fund's contribution to streets.
It's just 1.5.
It is just the 1.5? Okay, it is the 1.5.
Okay, we are...
Well, that's my point. In '09, '10, the general fund's contribution to streets total right now is how much, ignoring the...
2.6.
2.6. So essentially, we'd be taking the 2.6, keeping it in the general fund, utilizing the current surplus for the 2.6. But over time, as the surplus comes down, the general fund has to get used to giving back the 2.6 in the streets, or our street program will, in long-term, suffer.
How are we accounting for the $6 million-plus dollars that we're getting from the federal government routed through the MTA?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Najarian, I assume you mean the stimulus money that we have, projects that we had to submit, that had to be shovel-ready, that are now in the final review with Caltrans, and once those have been passed back through Caltrans, we will begin the process of going after those and bidding those jobs. So that 6 million will come in. What it will probably do, quite frankly, is add some more to the surplus of the regular gas tax funds as we address these particular projects.
So potentially, this untapped general fund contribution, this, what, 1.3, whatever is left, would be, are you following my earlier question there? Mr. Starbird? Were you listening to what we were saying? 6 million, because I know you were talking, I just want to make sure you're up to... Okay, so the 6 million that's going to come in, stimulus money for our, for streets and infrastructure projects, how's that being accounted for? Will that free up that additional piece of general fund money that we're still contributing, that perhaps next year, or sometime in the future, we can back out because it's a significant influx that's going to address these street repair projects?
In fact, what it may do, Mr. Najarian, is give us a longer period of time that we don't have to bring general fund monies back into the budget. And you may recall, just, we presented to you, and probably time for us to come back and present again, our pavement management system, and how we account for the money in trying to keep a 70% average condition of our streets, and that's how we budget that money, and we have the gas tax money, and then we augment that with general fund money, which is what Mr. Starbird was speaking to. But absolutely, with this influx of money, and if we get some of these additional monies back, Prop 1B monies, for instance, if those are released, it will allow us to rely less on the general fund money for a longer period of time.
On the next slide, around slide 12 or so, we're talking about a transfer from the CIP of 1.1 million, and what particular accounts are those coming from? What project? Are those being taken from particular projects that we were accumulating funds for, or is this just a reserve that was untapped?
Yeah, that's just, if you recall, Mr. Najarian, the CIP had funding sources from a variety of different areas, primarily, sales tax was going into the CIP, so we're redirecting those monies that go into the CIP back to the general fund.
So you're not rating a particular...
No, this is the streets...
Pool project or anything like that?
No, this is the streets program. The 1.5 in '08, '09, and this 1.1 in '09, '10 is the 2.6 that previously the general fund was contributing toward street projects. Correct?
Next, perhaps at a future date, I'd like to get into the details of our, the weakness, I think, was the word, that was used for the paramedic fund there, the enterprise fund. Is it an enterprise fund, or is it a different name for the paramedic?
It currently is, was originally set up as an enterprise fund, a special revenue fund, in terms of accounting, but it is a fund that's set aside from the general fund to identify the cost of the paramedic transports and the insurance payments and subscription services. And the challenge that we're facing overall is increasing demand for services, more runs, the addition of the fifth paramedic unit, and both because of the rates that are established, as well as the challenges we have in recovering, our revenues aren't matching our costs, and we're continuing to go deficit in the paramedic fund. So this $1.3 million is recognizing the need for the general fund to begin to face up the fact that the paramedic program is not self-supporting, and likely will never be self-supporting, although the chief is looking at ways to reduce the overall cost of the paramedic program. Likelihood in a community like Glendale, with its demographics, very, very difficult to get paramedics self-supporting. A lot of requests for services for which there is no insurance, there is no recovery, and yet you still have to transport those folks when you get the call.
And is that something we're going to be scratching the surface on?
Well, you'll do more than scratch the surface. When we do the fire department review, we'll get into this in great detail, as well as some of the ideas the chief has in reducing the costs.
Okay. On slide 16, we're referring to a hard hiring freeze, and, which is going to save potentially up to 4.5 million. Does this mean letting, not refilling jobs lost to attrition or to retirement, is that what we mean by hard hiring freeze?
That's exactly what we mean. But let me make the comment here. As I've mentioned before, the hard hiring freeze is the principal way that we're ensuring that this year's budget remains balanced, it's a very large piece of those strategies. I don't think it's the way you want to plan for keeping your budget balanced in '09, '10, and years beyond, depending on how long this downturn lasts, because it's a very brutal way to make, brutal and unsophisticated way to make budget reductions. It's kind of the luck of the draw. If a small operation has a position open, goes vacant because somebody retires or leaves, suddenly, they may find themselves 10% down in their total staffing, with a very large impact on programs, and one that we really can't anticipate, nor make conscious decisions about. It's really not a good way to make budget reductions, because you don't know where it's going to occur, and you don't know what the implications are going to be on services. The better way to do it is for the council to make conscious decisions about where you want to reduce or cut back, and through that, then, fund the positions you want to fund, and not fund the positions that you're willing to forego, the services or program levels. So we've included this number here as a hard hiring freeze. Frankly, this should be replaced with those department reductions that we're going to be presenting to you as we go through each department. This should be replaced with the 5% to 6% reductions in each and every department. Now, we have it here because if we don't make conscious decisions about reducing programs and service levels, then this is what we have to fall back to.
The only problem with this, with the better model that you talked about, is that it may involve actually laying off individuals whose positions we eliminate, and I presume there's a whole, you know, at the college, they called it bumping, where, is that the same term used?
Right, yeah.
Where someone with a greater seniority, whose position is eliminated, may end up in another department and ask that person to leave, and that person has more seniority than, you know, and create a little bit of havoc. So I'd like to look at a better way of doing that, but do you envision this only for this fiscal year, the '09, '10, and then maybe equalizing, or moving into that better plan next year?
Yeah, let me suggest this as a means to address that. We've stated, and you've been supportive, upsetting is a priority, not laying people off. It's completely contrary to what we're trying to accomplish on a national level by eliminating good-paying jobs, quality jobs. For that reason, the hard hiring freeze has been in effect in every operation of the city, regardless of the fund. So even in GWP, that is not part of the general fund, we have kept positions open. We've kept positions open in our housing unit, in our jobs unit, every fund of the city, we have imposed a hard hiring freeze, so that we can, in certain cases, transfer people who meet the qualifications from a general fund operation into a non-general fund operation. In effect, being able to eliminate a position without laying somebody off, without losing that job, but reducing cost in the general fund. I think what we'd likely see ourselves doing in order to avoid layoffs is identify a program of reductions in a department, identifying how many positions are vacant, and then, over time, whether it's before the end of the fiscal year, or sometime past the fiscal year, implementing those programs as positions become available, as we can find positions to transfer people into, in other non-general fund departments. In effect, then, implement a strategy that avoids layoffs, and maybe then need to keep the hard hiring freeze in place, on the one hand, to make sure that we stay within our means and the budget is balanced while we implement those very strategies that you approved. So you may come to a conclusion in a department, you're willing to reduce a program, eliminate a service, and as a result, a number of positions would be eliminated. If there are people in those positions, then we'd implement that program over time, so we can find places for those people to go into, so that there are other opportunities to preserve the employment while reducing the cost and avoiding layoffs.
Now, if there's a critical position that goes vacant, are you, are we giving you the discretion to come to us and say, "Look, we've got a hard hiring freeze, but we really need to fill someone in, chief of dispatch," or whatever the particular position might be, and then give us the authority to say, "Yes, go ahead and fill that spot"? Or is that entirely up to you?
Actually, we're doing that administratively now. Yasmin Beers is the, I'm not quite sure what determined, but let's call her the hard-hiring-free czar. She's the one, she's the one to whom a department has to go to say, "You know, we understand we have a hard hiring freeze, but this position is so critical, we must fill it now." And her last estimate to me was, one in 10, maybe lesser, getting approved. And so we're making those decisions administratively.
So my question for council is, do we want to have any say in that, at least have a report, and have some sort of... At least have a report and have some sort of, I hate the word accountability, but some sort of review that we can at least, the staff will at least prepare the, the criteria and the justifications, staff meaning Yasmin, and say, "Look, this is a position that, despite our hard hiring freeze, that we really had to fill, I had to fill, I just want to present it to you and make sure you're okay with it."
Let me suggest that before you take your poll. Giving your report as to the status, I think we can certainly do that. I'm not sure you want to get bogged down in reviewing every one of those pitches that Yasmin has to, has to receive and make a decision on. You're going to have a whole lot of time, you're going to need to devote to putting a broad program together for balancing this budget in the upcoming fiscal year. I'd really want to encourage you not to get engaged in debating and discussing every position that gets funded under the hard freeze, although we're certainly happy to report to you, but I think that's going to take an inordinate amount of your time and gets you bogged down.
I don't think...
I think reports fine. We're more than happy to do that.
But look, I don't think looking at all 10, all 10 requests from the departments is appropriate, but certainly looking at that one out of 10 that does get hired and funded, that's the one that I'd like to have some idea as to what, why that decision was made and so forth.
Okay. It's up to you.
Because people will come to us, and they'll say, "Look, you guys had a hard hiring freeze, and all of a sudden, look, you've got a few people hired here, a few people hired here, and you're a bunch of pansies up there." At least we can say, "Well, look, this is a critical position because X, Y, and Z."
Do you, let me ask you, do you want that before we proceed to approve a hiring?
I'd say yes.
I don't need to see any of that. I'm not going to micromanage.
Yeah, yeah. Well, let me turn to Yasmin, because she...
Listen, we're not here to start with that...
Mayor, I just gave my opinion.
Yeah, but the term "micromanage" somehow puts the four of us...
That's what this council has done over the years. I sat here 12 years.
That's fine, Mr. Weber, but you don't need to start using words like that to describe the actions of four of your fellow council members.
When you want to get down to detail of every hiring freeze and every person you're micromanaging, you've got a city manager and staff to do that.
Did we just ask for details? I don't believe we did.
Let me ask Yasmin to give you a sense as to kind of the process and dynamics of that before we...
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Yasmin Beers, deputy city manager. The hard hiring freeze is in place, and what happens currently is that all department heads understand, understand that there is a hiring freeze in place, and there's a number of vacancies within the general fund and other funds that are in place. The department heads will not put forward a request unless they truly believe that the position needs to be filled, and there's a number of reasons that may happen. Currently, I just approved two positions to be filled in the police department because of their communications area for dispatchers. They're down a number of dispatchers, and they need to be able to sustain their operations to be able to answer 911 calls, and they don't want to have to backfill those positions with overtime with police officers, et cetera. And so they were at a critical point. They had a number of vacancies, they had waited, they hadn't requested for any positions to be filled, so they were at a critical point where they felt that they weren't able to sustain their operations any longer, and there's a long time for startup purposes. So those two positions were approved. I don't approve any sort of position to go forward in a vacuum. I look at the request that comes forward from the department, we have discussions within our office in terms of the viability of moving that position forward, and then what we have started recently is taking those requests to the executives that sit at the executive staff meeting on Wednesdays, and have them also be on board in terms of understanding the reason why we are approving certain positions to go forward, because what we were seeing is that if a position was approved in a specific department, another department whose employees are watching these positions come forward may ask, "Well, why is this position being opened up in GWP, and why isn't this being opened up in, in public works, and we've been waiting for it?" So that we would all be on the same page before making an approval move forward. I hope that's answered some of your questions. None of the, none of the decisions are, are made in a vacuum. And the department heads, again, are so good about sending information forward and requesting for things to be approved when it's absolutely necessary, because they want to be part of the solution. Currently, I would say we have close to 100 vacancies within the general fund. No? Citywide, of which 67 or so, I, I think are, are in the general fund. And from those positions, I may have about 15 or so requests that have come forward from the departments that I'm still holding on to. Strategically, we're keeping positions, as Mr. Starbird stated earlier, open within non-general fund departments, so that we are able to place certain positions that are in the general fund into those non-general fund departments and, and make some adjustments for the budget as well. So out of the 100 or so vacancies that we have, I may have 15 requests before me, and they're still pending. Of those 15 requests, we felt that the two dispatchers were the ones that we were going to go ahead and move forward with.
So in the last month, how many positions have been approved for hiring?
In the last month?
Last month?
Two.
Two?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, three. One in community development and housing, three.
Ms. Friedman?
Thank you. Question, comment?
Just a comment. First, I, I am glad to hear this report, because I think it's good that we're taking this situation seriously, and also looking at it as an opportunity for long-term efficiency, and looking at the way that the city spends taxpayer money, and all of that is good. And, and I'm glad that you're able to find some places to make some reductions that are going to be less painful than cutting programs for people. Just a few thoughts. In terms of revenue generation and tax base, we went through that very quickly, but I did notice that you were looking for some new sources of revenue, like film permitting. And something that I've heard is that some of the permitting, you know, there might be some opportunities in terms of making the permitting process more efficient, to try to give some help to, you know, people who do, you know, want to still build, and that might be something that we can take a look at as well. I have a question about the, the hiring freeze, some of those details, and I know that we're going to be getting more into those details, into going kind of department by department. But in terms of layoffs, I think that in general, it's a good policy to, to avoid layoffs as much as possible. I have a slight concern about making a policy that's so strict that you move people into positions that they're not very well-suited for, and making a department less efficient or forcing an employee on a department head who doesn't want one. So I want to be sure that we have some flexibility to continue to retain the best and the brightest people, and to be sure that anyone who's in a position, especially anything that's an important position, is the right person for the job, and not just somebody who we want to find a place for. So I'm going to be looking for that as well. I do have a question about something that one of the speakers said, about managers and taking Fridays off, and I'm wondering if, if that is the case, and if there's any response to that.
Well, I guess the only response would be is that the managers are on the same kind of flex schedule that other employees are, which means that you are scheduled for your 40 hours. Managers generally work considerably more than that, but you may find a time when a manager takes a Friday off, which would be the same, the A or B shift, we call it, as other non-managers. I'll use myself as an example. I'm in the office almost every Friday. But if it happens to be a scheduled off, and I have something I'd like to go and do, then I could take that Friday off, that's my normal scheduled off time, and essentially do that. But most managers, certainly at executive level, you'll find them here generally most Fridays, whether it's their scheduled Friday off or not. Managers generally required to work the same number of hours or more, they don't get overtime, so you'll usually find most managers working more than their scheduled 40 hours, whether it's their week of their Friday off or not. It's the same schedule as, as, is provided for other employees.
Mr. Mayor, I can attest to that, because I'm in virtually every day, and over the years, I've seen many managers here on their days off, including you, virtually every single Friday unless you're on a vacation. And that's on their own time. They're not getting paid.
Likewise, if I can, if there's night meetings or other things, managers aren't compensated for those, whereas the rank and file, staff members, they come for a meeting, have to have either compensating time off or overtime. Managers aren't eligible for that. So managers generally have to regulate their time, they have to put in at least what's required on a weekly basis, 40-hour work week, but generally you find a vast number of them put in considerably more, just because of the demands of the job, whether it's community meetings, or nighttime meetings, or anything else that goes on. They're not compensated, but they're expected to be there.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, I'm not sure that you found a consensus yet on the previous issue.
No.
I don't think we've actually done that yet, but I would like to weigh in on that. I am not interested in, in reading or hearing about the detail of every question and concern that comes from Ms. Beers. I am interested in seeing a report, as was suggested, about those that are hired. I think that's what you were suggesting, Mr. Mayor. And the reason for that is not because I don't trust Ms. Beers or our department heads to, it is simply because of what Mr. Najarian was mentioning. Ultimately, we get asked. Ultimately, we have to have an answer when these things occur, and I don't want to find out about it from an individual constituent walking up and saying, "What about this individual?" I want to know about it ahead of time, so I'm prepared to, to answer, and I can find out is, was this something that made sense or not? So, no, I don't consider that micromanaging, and I don't think any of, any, not only the council, but I'm sure that our, our management doesn't view that as micromanaging either. Having a report that tells us what we are doing certainly is not micromanaging. But I don't see us having a role in, in evaluating that. We will obviously look at it as something that doesn't make sense, I'm sure. You can rest assured, Mr. Starbird, you'll hear from us.
I'm sure you will, and we're more than happy to provide that to you.
I have a quick question for Mr. Zern.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, while Steve's coming up, is that the council's consensus, an informational report that would be timely about any actions that, I mean, we can literally, if it's approved, well, we can, we can give it to you on a weekly basis. There aren't that many of them. We can also provide you with a sheet of what the, a listing of what the open positions are in, frankly, throughout the city. So if somebody says, "Why not this and why this?", we're happy to respond to those, and we'll give you that report if that's your consensus.
Absolutely. Mr. Zern, on the stimulus package, I know we have to go out to bid, and let's say, paving, street paving, we take the lowest bid, lowest reasonable and qualified bid. However, do we ever, and I'm sure we don't, but I would like to see is, who are the people doing the work? In terms of stimulus, we talked about a 9.9 unemployment here in the city of Glendale. If it's a company from Long Beach, Orange County, San Bernardino, I'm sure that most of those workers, if not all, reside in those areas. So be curious to see how it affects employment here in this city, or at least the surrounding communities. I noticed one of the bids for one of the buildings, it was Hopkins, who obviously is a Glendale-based contractor, and I'm sure most of his employees, if they don't live in Glendale, live in the surrounding areas, may even shop here. So I'm just curious as to what we can do to kind of refine our, our policy.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when it comes to heavy construction, unfortunately, we don't have a lot of firms that are, that are based in Glendale. We do have a couple, though, and, and one of them actually has been, PaveCo, has been very active in the city. We have another smaller firm that's been bidding, and in the next couple of weeks, you'll see them actually get a, a job. We're going to, go ahead, they were, they were the lowest responsible bidder. What we could do is, if you'd like, we can show you not just the, the prime or the, the general contractor on the job, but see his subs as well, because oftentimes, they may, they may hire subs, and for them, local subs works out better because of mobilizing and making sure people get to work will sometimes benefit them to get as close to the job as they possibly can. And a lot of times in the bids, you'll see generally the subcontractor listings, but we can make that a little bit more detailed and just say, "Look at..." Or maybe highlight local firms. Local Glendale, La Crisena, Montrose-type firms that are doing business.
Mr. Starbird? Well, I'm wondering if there isn't a way to begin having contractors, especially on the larger jobs, pairing up in advance with, with community development and housing in our employment center, so that to the extent there, you know, a lot of these are probably union jobs, maybe hired through a hall, but to the extent that there's opportunities to, working with our employment development section, begin to find out how we may be able to pair up some of these jobs that'll, that'll be created through this work with our local employment pool, and also begin to track it. I think it'd be very interesting to see as, as stimulus money comes out, as jobs are being created and projects are coming on board, begin to see where the employment is coming from.
I think that's a very good idea.
It is an interesting note, because with the economy the way it is, we're seeing contractors come from places we've never had them come before. Way out Ventura and beyond, San Bernardino counties, Riverside counties, they're coming a long way to look for work. So as, as you mentioned, a lot of times, that money may go back into those communities and miss us, either from our residents or shoppers, folks spending that money here.
And then I also have a quick question for Mr. Baruchy.
Mr. Mayor, I would note that as the treasurer walked up, he stepped on the city auditor.
By accident.
Well, I wanted to start by saying, Mr. Baruchy, probably the premier city treasurer in the state of California.
Certainly in the city.
Without question, that was proven in the election. Do you think that in the coming year, there will be a, a little more of a cash flow from some of the, some of the investments? Do you think we're going to start to realize a little more money into the treasury, or how do you see it?
Oh, goodness gracious, that's a toughie. Right now, I don't see it.
No.
What I do see is, what we have is going to continue for a very long period of time. The administration, the treasury people are very cautious about hanging their hat on where the bottoming out of the recession is. From, from my aspect, the bottoming out of the recession, as far as getting people back to work and getting the economy moving and business investing again, is, is a little different from what helps us as far as the portfolio. I'm looking at the credit markets, I'm looking at the financials. The, the, the basic problem is, is one of funding, the stimulus package, the budget, the initiatives of the current administration. The, the energy programs, the education programs, the health programs is being funded on a promise. There, there is no money. And so as the treasury continue to, to, to fund these programs, they're funding them with IOUs. Means that treasuries continually, we increase our debt, which continues to keep so much available out there, that it, it basically dampens rates. That's the biggest problem that I see, as, as long as these programs keep getting approved and we keep funding them with treasury IOUs, it, it dampens the rates.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, the other dynamics that I think you'll see in the portfolio is the investments that Ron has made that are, that are further out, the three, the four-year investments that are now coming due and, and turning over. Even if the economy recovers a little bit and rates inch their way up, they're probably going to be less than what he was able to get several years ago in the longer investments. So you've got this cycle of the older, longer investments coming off of rates that were much more preferable to where they'll be today, or maybe even where they'll be six months or a year from now, and that whole cycle of, of the longer-term investments coming due.
Yeah. What we saw a few weeks ago, when I came before council, and suggested that we open up another life account. We could do things, we look for opportunities within the portfolio and move money from low yield, very low, I mean, everything is, low yielding is a relative term here. I think I prefaced my remarks that evening or afternoon, that rates have compressed to the point that we're in a, a 2% marketplace. Whether we're going out three or four years, or whether we're around two to three years, we seem to be a few basis points under or over 2%. As, as, as the city manager was just mentioning, what we've experienced in the past three or four months has happened, exactly as Jim has said. we seem to be a few basis points under or over 2%. As the city manager was just mentioning, what we've experienced in the past three or four months has happened, exactly as Jim has said. The calls that we have out there, those bonds have been called or they have matured. They've matured at three or four-plus percent and we are replacing with two and if we're doing well, two-plus. And I'm, I bought yesterday a three-year, one-year nun call, one time. That means we locked in a rate of 2.16 for one year. Incredible. The chances of that being renewed in a year are probably two, Slimski and Nunski, but we've locked in 2.16 for a year. I mean, that's sort of like what I'm dealing with. We can look for opportunities by moving money out of a money market fund, paying 40 basis points and opening up a life account at maybe 160 basis points right now. But do I see things on the horizon? If I were talking from the heart, I'd love to say I'm hoping for, but I don't have a basis for it.
Mayor, if I can, I was talking to an individual who has an investment portfolio larger than Glendale's, who said their philosophy is principle preservation. It's not about return, just about preserving what you have, which is somewhat reflective of the rate that we continue to get on our certificates of participation in the police building, which last week was a quarter of 1%. So somebody was essentially borrowing our $57 million that's in that, in those cops, and paying us one-quarter of 1% for the week that they'll hold them. And frankly, that's a relatively high week, a high rate based on where we've been for the past year. They've been down as low as 0.15 of 1% that somebody's willing to pay us on those bonds just because of its security. They're into principle preservation, not worrying about return.
And that individual, Mr. Mayor, is consulting with our city manager. I assume that's Mr. Caruso you're speaking of.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? The one open question is about taking a Thursday or some other designated day to have a session. Are we in agreement that we need to do that?
I don't think there's, for me, there's nothing more important right now, so I'll make myself available whenever I'm asked to be there.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you know, I teach classes two days a week, so I'm going to have to look at that in the morning. So I'm going to have to look at that and get back to you. I can't answer that until I go back to my office, look at my calendar.
Again, these don't have to be mornings and they frankly don't have to be Thursdays. We're just trying to find areas where, and they could be different days as long as we can notice them in advance. We're just looking for four-hour blocks of time that we can-
Maybe we can work with Linda and we can arrive at a day or time this week.
It's a Brown Act thing, right? You need the day advance notice to put out.
Well, yeah, the special meeting requires 24, but we'd want to give our normal 72-plus hour notice-
I know, but-
-the end of the week, so.
I'd like to set up a more or less schedule. I mean, a determined day.
Let me suggest today then, going into closed session, we'll devote some time to calendaring and we'll identify some dates and then we'll publish a schedule.
Okay. Is there anything else? Are there any comments from executives or others in the audience? If none, we adjourn.
You didn't ask for nervous spats, Mr. Zern.
We are adjourned.